Good evening. It is 6:30, Monday, April 5th, 2021. This is the Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. Call the meeting in order. Stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take your roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present, and you have a quorum.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda this evening? There are no questions or discussion. Can we entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. First item I want to discuss is the提议 as I was creating the American Recovery Act enclosed in 3A. An initial legal opinion from the law firms will offer an American Recovery Act. We do know that we will receive funding in two drafts of approximately $1 each. While we have not received the first draw, nor do we know exactly when this will occur, I'd like to share my thoughts to the board on some additional spending ideas. Nothing to vote on tonight, just ideas at the time. A round two grant opportunity to our Carney businesses, really to kind of mirror our first grant relief program, reducing the grant maximum to $2,500 per draw, maximum amount of 40 applicants for over $100,000, and consider offering a third round when we get our second dispersment, no guarantee. Provide a round one hospitality grant opportunity, mirror what other counties and municipalities have done, like Platte County of our original grant relief program, but for hospitality businesses only, our hotels here in the Carney community. Fortunately, they have not had the help that other businesses have and have been hit extremely hard during the pandemic. We're looking to, I'm looking at it to offering $500 per room, per hotel. We have 250 hotel rooms here in the Carney, so that would equal $155,000 grant money to help those businesses. Consider offering a second round. When we get the second dispersment, once again, no guarantee. That would leave approximately $775,000 left from our first draw city of Carney to use for other legal and intended purposes. This may need to be held in reserve to help cover the I-35 interchange cost, among other improvements, infrastructure improvements in the community. That ends my report on the American Recovery Act. I'll move on to the police salary pay study. This is something that our city administrator and our chief of police has heard me talk about quite a bit over the last 12 months. This is something that provided a lot of stress and concern to me, but nobody's going into the law enforcement field anymore. Every municipality is searching for law enforcement officers. We only have two open vacancies. I know some of our neighbor to the west has five, neighbor to the south has 15, so we're very fortunate to have, not the vacancies others have. To help compensate for that, however, Smithville is currently offering a $4,000 sign-on bonus to new employees, and the city of Riverside is offering a $10,000 sign-on bonus to help fulfill their officer vacancies. Currently, we have two unfilled positions. I did complete a salary study with the help of some neighboring departments and information gathering. I have put that together and provided it to the city administrator. The police chief, I have asked him to provide that to the board as well. I feel we do need to consider developing an equitable pay program in order to not only compete for new police officers, but to also provide incentive and longevity tenure of our current officers. That would mean possibly evaluating our overall pay and benefit structure for those individuals. Last item I want to discuss this evening under Mayor's remarks is I would like to turn it over to Mr. Eric Marshall. I was out, I was off of work last week, Thursday and Friday, and I spent some time at Lyons Park, and I would like Eric to provide the board and our community an update on the progress there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a little update on the progress. A lot of concrete has been going in at Lyons Park. If you haven't driven by the park, I suggest you do so. Take a quick peek. If you'd like an updated tour, Ryan or myself would like to, and would welcome the opportunity to walk you through the park and give you the updates prior to the different features going in. As I mentioned, a lot of concrete has been going in. The main structures of the pads that hold the shelters are in. The shelters will arrive April 9th. The prefabbed bathroom will be arriving via a large truck, and there you will unload that bathroom as a whole unit, and that will come April 19th. We're thankful for the police department to provide traffic control on 33 when that does come, because that will take a little time to get them maneuvered in through the old firehouse parking lot around to the back and so on and so forth. Last week, we did approve a security company. Diversified Security will be providing the cameras for the park conduit. Has been run into those areas of the shelters, which will also reach down to the bandshell area, so we can monitor that as well, along with the playgrounds and the splash pad area. The playground itself is almost complete. They've probably got one or two more days of work yet to be done installing the playground. The splash pad people will be coming next week. That is what we've been told. We do have a meeting tomorrow, a progress meeting with all of the contractors, our architect, Ryan, myself, and Donnie Smith. So that'll be an interesting meeting when we hash out a few problems that have been happening, but hopefully to get that rectified. The electrical to those pads and to the different areas, that will be coming as soon as they start erecting the shelters. And the sign has been, the base of the sign actually has been installed on the corner, the southeast corner of Second Street and along 33. The stone is there, and the stone mason will start to cut those pieces to fit it around the half circle, and then the actual sign itself will have stone, excuse me, pinned letters instead of the etched in stones. That will really look nice. What I'd like to say first and foremost, what you did tonight makes Ryan and I really happy that you approved the change order for the concrete for the parking lot areas. We think you're going to be really happy with that instead of having the asphalt along First and Second Street. So we appreciate you agreeing to our recommendation for that. And finally, we'd like to say thanks to Kurt Hamilton. He had come to us about his second round of fundraising and asked Ryan and I what we thought we would need in the area of development, and we told him the security system. And as of today, all the money to cover the product and installation, the total cost of the security system has been raised. So big kudos to Kurt Hamilton for fundraising and getting that taken care of. Ryan, do you have anything you might want to add or questions from the board to us?
Yeah, I do have something I'd like to add. Kurt also has fundraised and is still fundraising for memorial benches in the park. We went ahead and ordered the benches, and we will be selling those memorial plaques to be engraved and everything.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thanks for the update. We'll move on to the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The north end of town has been pretty much dominated by Kissick working at the Long 33 Highway and getting under those roads. It's been apparently a tough battle for them because they've been on that Major Street for a little while, and maybe Donnie can fill you in a little bit on that. And thank you again, but also for approving the change order for that additional work that occurred at Lawrence. I don't, they haven't said that they requested any additional money on Major Street, so I'm assuming it's all in the contract.
I hope so. I've not heard anything more. Most of this is traffic control, Jersey barriers and such for road closed signs and stuff like that that MODOC required is most of the cost. We are now complete from Washington to Bodie Street on Grove. The tieovers have been done to Major Street, so that part is 100%. And they're moving back to Lawrence. They've got a little stop that goes east on Lawrence, and then they'll be continuing to the west on Lawrence after that. Later this week, I was told that they're going to charge the Grove line that's left to the north and get back tees on it, and it'll be live probably by the end of the week. They do have the casing underneath Lawrence, and they're working on getting their casing underneath Major right now. They've had some issues due to old stuff. They're doing a fabulous job, even though most of this has been, predates us. There's lines that were put in in 59, right Jim?
Well, actually earlier than that. The city took it over in 52 or 53.
So we ran into a couple of those, and they've addressed those lines, and the rest of it's early 60s. So been there a long time, and it's really appreciated. It's going to help us a bunch more for that. That's all I have.
Donnie, after I spent some time at the park, I did drive up some time with the guys as they approached Bodie Street, and I'll send you a picture, but there was 12 different utility lines in the ground that they were hand digging around. I mean, and just water and mud and deep in the stuff and hand digging around the utilities.
Yeah, there's meters right there in front of the apartment complex. There's just no way to get a machine in there.
Yeah. All right.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, sir.
Thanks. We'll go on to, move on rather, to our public requests and petitions this evening.
Mr. Mayor, Pete Emerson is joining us this evening, and he is the new owner of Gino's, and he, due to our change in licensing that allows somebody outside of the Clay County to have a license, he's chosen to exercise his right at that, and he is going to become the managing officer. And Pete, if you want to say hi, you can turn on your mic. Let's see if I can get a picture of you. You're on mute right now. Let's see, right down in your lower right, or left-hand quarter.
I think I got it. Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Hello. I thank you all for your, for your time, Mr. Mayor and the board. Yes, I was, my name's Peter Emerson, and I'm the managing officer for IGWT Management, which is doing businesses, Gino's Italian Cuisine. And while I live in St. Louis, I make frequent trips out to Carney, and I have a, my manager is working there full-time. I actually live in there in Carney, and just for simplicity's sake, I was going, I do all of the filings and everything, so I was going to put the liquor license in my name, so it's just easier to manage going forward.
Mr. Mayor, he has submitted a complete application, and it's been signed off on by our chief of police and also myself, and we recommend approval. It's been closed in 5A.
Is there a party?
Yes, a motion by the board would be appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve.
First or second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Pete.
I'm waiting for Jim to read that.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Take care.
We have no public hearings this evening. We have no old business to discuss. We have no new business to discuss on the agenda. We have a published executive session hearing scheduled this evening, a closed session to discuss personnel matters per RSMO 610021 subsection 1 to discuss legal actions, causes of actions of litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications, and RSMO 610021 subsection 3, personnel information about employee as discussed or recorded. So if we consider a motion to go into the executive session?
So moved.
Second thought?
All in favor?
Aye.
Board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Pogue? I mean, that's from the old days, isn't it?
Old days.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
And Alderman Vargas?
Aye.
Vote unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Executive session is 6:46, and we will return to this platform once we've finished.
Peter, this is David Pavlich. Do you need some help logging out? Can you hear me?
No, no, I was working on multiple computers. I'm, I apologize.
Okay, no, you're good.
I'm logging out.
You're good. All right. Good night.
Night.
7:34 we adjourned our executive session. To all discussion, Alderman Spencer.
Well, first and foremost, I would like to encourage everyone to get out and vote tomorrow. It's very important and I'm hoping that anyone and everyone listening will vote yes on our use tax. I also would like to put in an option, an idea for this possible American Recovery Act fund that we will be getting. And I know that a portion of it, let me make sure I read this correctly, is category A includes the ability for cities to directly assist hotels and tourism-driven industries which have been hard-hit in the past year. This could include programs like advertising to encourage visitors to return to your area. I am suggesting that the Kearney Missouri Travel and Location Relocation Guide, I am saying that maybe we earmark $15,000 to that to put it back out there. It was just finished up at the beginning of last year. It is still relevant and everything in it is pertinent. There are a couple of business changes, a couple that have left and a couple that have joined. Other than that, it is spot-on, it is very well put together. It would benefit all of our tourism-driven businesses, which includes hotels, motels, restaurants, plus many other of our local businesses. Target them and mail them out. I don't know how many of you are aware, but one of our biggest draws that we have here in Kearney are people from Minnesota. We get them from all around in there, especially the Northfield area. I saw them day after day after day out at the James Farm. But we could target certain areas and only mail to households with a particular income that we would decide. We could distribute it in the newspaper. I'm sure those of you that have a newspaper saw that last week Liberty did exactly that. And this was distributed in the Courier Tribune for the Liberty paper. So I am just saying that less advertise our city, less advertise our businesses, our amenities. We have a lot to offer. With our amphitheaters starting back up in August, plus the 50th anniversary of the James Festival, I think when these restrictions are lifted, that things will really break loose this year. I think this is a prime opportunity. It could be a sum of money that would be very well invested. So that is just an option I would like to put out there for these funds.
I think it's a great idea. Anytime we can support our local businesses and bring people to our community, I think is a positive one. So I would, I would welcome you to maybe do some additional research on that, some additional information.
Sure, thank you.
Alderman Holt?
No, I don't really have anything. It's just really good to see the infrastructure going in. That's always exciting. We know that that's a true investment into our city that is decades down the road before it has to be done again. So it's, it's a true, I guess you'd call it a heritage investment. And those things are always good to, good to see.
Alderman Lehman?
Just like to reiterate, for everybody to get out and vote tomorrow. We have a use tax on the ballot and so hopefully everybody can see the use and the use tax. And